We're going to actually skip item six, Title 15 amendments. I asked Dave if he'd put that on the next agenda, but we would like to...
Is that okay?
You can't, you twisted my arm really hard. Yes.
This next one, concept review for Blue Ox. I'm sure they've been waiting this whole time, so we'll give them some time.
Well, we've heard you've been waiting longer than that.
What's that?
Sorry, never mind.
Just to cut to the chase, they're familiar with the proposal, they're familiar with the current general plan designation. This is just about you providing them feedback on the concept with the idea that really the next step for them is a zone change. It's that simple. There's no formal action on the concept plan review. And like I mentioned, the intent is for you to be as explicit as you can about your level of comfort for supporting a change that would lead to this kind of development. I'll say the same thing I think I've said a few times tonight. We as staff, we hate to see applicants spend the money that it takes to get a plat ready to bring it through with a zone change. If it's going to be DOA, I'd even say, you know, if you have significant reservations with it, let's talk about those now, just at least so that the applicants are aware of what they might be dealing with as they go through the formal process. And likewise, if there are maybe adjustments that you'd like to see made or something like that with a zone change application, or if you love it, just whatever your feelings might be, this time is really to share those, so.
We talked about this last night in the work session a little bit, had some discussion. This commissioner's having...
I wonder what that discussion was?
Oh.
I know.
Where were you?
I was at the voting polls.
Why don't we just go and have the applicants kind of tell us what they're asking for?
Okay.
Yeah, we'd love to hear from you.
You guys are amazing to stay up four hours past my bedtime.
Will you tell us your name?
Aaron Robertson of Blue Ox Development. We've...this project has been contemplation for many years. The baton has been passed from previous efforts to us. We've made a run at this a couple different times. Previously, we've tried to look at a concept that had townhomes on this location. We were afraid we were going to get tarred and feathered for such an egregious error. We're trying to do something that's conforming to the existing master plan. We've talked with the neighboring residents and some of the residents in the region have a lot of support for what we're presenting here. And I think Dave teed it up well. This is a demonstration of our efforts to try and accommodate some of the feedback that we've received up to this point. If there's other feedback that we can get, we're interested in, you know, we heard tonight, property rights compromise, you know, larger picture, you know, where are your kids going to live, all these types of things. You know, I would take a lot of the comments that you all very well iterated in these, in response to some of the previous things, I think all apply here. And, you know, we're a developer with property that we thought we could do something with and was intended in original agreements to get some type of development, and so we're just trying to get it done. So I would be more lengthy in my comments if it was a different hour and my brain was working differently, but at this point, I'm happy to respond to questions and comments.
I have a quick question, not much of a comment. I'm familiar with the area except for are there any services in the area at this time? Water, sewer, electrical?
Great question. This property was annexed into the city and is part of the city. There has been some concepts and things to get services to our site. We don't have a significant amount of services onsite. The water's not too far away. The biggest concern we have, as we've addressed this with staff and engineering, is probably sewer. Sewer is a ways away. When we reached the agreement with the city to put in that pond, you know, we've got some casings underneath the river to accommodate for the sewer getting there. We need to work with the property owners, getting those easements and things done, but we're aware that it's not there, but is it impossible to get it there? No. But there's nothing readily available onsite. Everything we would have to pay to kind of bring into it.
Can we, Brandon, can you show where the nearest sewer tie-in would be? Where's...where is the...okay, right there.
What size are your casings under the river?
I'm not sure I'm going to respond to you.
They are big enough?
Big enough.
There's two casings, I know that much. I don't know what sizes they are.
VIS is correct, it's shown as 16 and a 12. Brandon, what is that, what's that currently applied as?
I currently have the zoning later on.
Okay, what's it zoned as right now?
Currently RR. I think it's a medium density.
So you just said it was conforming to the master plan?
Yeah, your master plan is medium density residential. You know, if we look at the maximum density based on the various zones that you have in your medium density residential, we would be less than maximum on that, but obviously we're trying to fit quite a few units in there.
And the overall plan obviously doesn't stop there, right?
You know, we have other property in the river bottoms area. I know the Halversons and everybody has had lots of conversations about what could happen. They're supportive of what we're doing, but, you know, for our purposes, the rest of my property is in the county. Separate conversation. And, you know, we'll deal with that as part of your process to create your master plan down there in the river bottoms. But this piece has been contemplated for development for a long time, and we're trying to get just this little piece done.
So Main Street obviously just got widened. Have you had a chance to have any conversations with UDOT? Or are you waiting to see what happens here before you...
No, two point, we've had conversations with UDOT. They're aware of some of the original designs for an arterial road to come off of this. And they're space sized, and we talked about casings and things under the road. There's a lot of conversation and prep done for that. But that application, because we're in the city, is supposed to come from the city, so it's not something that we have approved or done, but they're aware and supportive of, to the degree that we can at this stage.
So they are supportive, they wouldn't have an issue with a road connecting...
Not that we were made aware of when they got the easement from us, when they widened that.
Okay.
So with the pond there, what is that, what's the water table like there with the wetlands?
We definitely, I mean, that pond was created there because of the springs that are sitting up on the hill underneath Gail Halverson's old house. We have a higher water table. We're not anticipating being able to have basements there. We will be actually building up our site a little bit to make it work.
You're also partially in the floodplain?
There is so, you know, we're not in your flood zone. Your 100-year floodplain, you know, we're anticipating that we're building out of that a little bit, mitigating that, but we're not.
So the grave property is not within the floodplain, even the 100-year floodplain? I know I had multiple conversations with Paul Pryor about his concerns about the pond being developed there, that it would raise the groundwater so high that he wouldn't be able to farm that. I think that that's been proven, that it's okay.
Yeah.
That the groundwater isn't there, but the place where the pond is now is always a bunch of reeds and kind of just a marshy mess there.
Yeah, I mean, that's a lower spot, and since that pond has been built there, you know, I've not...
Strongly helped.
Yeah, we're...that pond was part of it, and I hopefully it was included in your package. That pond was designed and intended to have some development around it and turn into some usable space, some park space, as opposed to, you know, what some of the neighbors are currently referring to as the mosquito incubator. But we've, you know, we're looking at trying to complete something that was envisioned, you know, prior to my time, prior to Dave's time in his current position, and so we're working off of, you know, remnants of other agreements and old ideas, and so we're just trying to get caught up and get done.
So just thinking, you know, just thinking with another idea, if this was, if this area, if your area was adopted like into the river bottoms, what's that called?
River bottoms?
If it was adopted, well, if it was adopted into the river bottoms, one of the considerations is that there, what are those things called?
TRDs.
The...
Transfer of the year.
Right.
The TDRs?
TDRs.
TDRs. Would that be something that you would consider to exchange, what's the, how do you say that, exchange TDRs for this area?
I don't think any of us know yet at this point.
I know. I mean, is that something that would be...
So I'm in the world of development.
Right.
You know, am I going to consider options? I'll always consider things.
Right.
Our position personally on TDRs as they're handled in most communities is we hate them. They're too complicated, the market can't adjust properly for them, they're hard to get to work, people don't understand them, and so it makes it for a tough trade. Some people make great and other people just get taken advantage of and don't understand. So while we would consider that for sure, I'm going to try and maximize my value. We'd prefer just to develop based on your current master plan.
Thank you.
To tell you the truth, my opinion right now is, is that until there's a plan and some, some very fine, I mean, we have to have an idea of what it's going to take to get your services there. So with the absence of water, sewer, and power, we haven't even talked about a secondary irrigation or anything like that that exists in most of the city, you know, that's an awfully expensive proposition to get those. Did we find those? Is the closest sewer on Southfield Road there?
It is.
Yes.
So the sewer would have to be brought from there, under the river, pumping station put in.
I don't think we need a pumping station. I think we'd gravely flow.
Siphoned.
Can you, Brandon, can you bring up the...
I don't want to be responsible for it.
Can you bring up the growth boundary for me?
Cleaning sewers.
Where are we at again? So just outside.
Where are you bringing Kevin?
So this is the growth boundary, so Sun Rock is in it on the other side of the road.
Is it the development boundary?
Dave, can you address the growth boundary and maybe explain why this is not part of the growth boundary at this point?
Yes, this would be one thing that would have to be changed with the zone change. We're a little bit unique in that years ago, a line was created within the city that defines areas where, and it's largely intended at least to be based on, the current availability of infrastructure, whether it's utilities or roads or whatever, is available with the idea that properties within the growth boundary are ready, that the time is right for those to develop, and properties outside of the growth boundary aren't ready yet to be developed. We've changed that in different ways, six or seven different times in the last 15 years, so you know, it's not, it's a living element of land use regulation like everything. But I think to date, this property hasn't been included in the growth boundary, just for the reasons we were just talking about.
So I've kayaked the river recently, and I think the commercial property just north of you has all the sewer connections you need sitting in their backyard, if you've noticed.
Bottomers.
Lots of honey pots.
Yeah.
But honestly, that's my biggest concern. So there's commercial just north of these guys, but they don't have sewer tie-ins? That commercial area just north?
No.
No sewer tie-ins there?
No.
That'd be my biggest concern is how, so let's say this passed, we approved it, which I'm not opposed to there being building in this area, I think.
Okay.
So let's say it got passed, what's your plan, or what would your plan be then to get sewer to your location?
I think, I mean, we've had discussions for years on hypothetically what could happen, where that sewer would come from. It's not like this is a brand new idea and we've never developed before. We're aware that we have to get those services there, and I think we would just work to finalize previous discussions that we had had with other landowners to tie up those easements, get them laid out, designed, and executed, and then we pay to build a sewer. We're developers, we know what offsite costs are, we understand what the reimbursement agreements are within the city of Spanish Fork, you know, we get what it takes.
So the cost that you had put in to do sewer for this location seems like pretty small area. Would you do that with the expectation that additional development would take place after this one?
I think there would be an expectation from the landowners whose property we are crossing to get there, that they could tie in at some point, as they would then have sewer in their yards. I know we were approached a few years ago by Sun Rock, and they wanted an easement that we worked with them on to, because they wanted the same sewer that would come through our property onto theirs. So I think, you know, to say that we have grand plans for the entire valley, I don't think we've gone that far, but the idea that the property owner's immediately adjacent to us and affected by that sewer, there would be some interest there. But I'm not going to, other than Sun Rock specifically asking us, saying we want to develop and here's our plan, I don't think anybody else has immediate plans for that development.
Do you represent or hope to represent the properties east of you? Because the last time that we heard anything about this property, the plan was to have high density along the pond, and it was just a concept too, and then some medium density, and then some low density as you went up, you know, northeast along the river.
Correct.
Is that still your concept? Are those landowners in there expecting to jump on your dime and continue along that south side of the river?
That's really a separate conversation that we've pulled out from this property. I think there's, we still have property under option in that area. We used to have more property under option that we no longer have. So to say that I speak for all those properties at this point would not be appropriate. I know that they remain interested in some kind of development at some point in the future, but I think there's efforts afoot to try and explore things out in the county and do some other things.
Is the property that you have options on contiguous to this?
No.
It's further east and there's some property between you and them.
That's not true, I guess there's a, Aaron...
It's not contiguous.
The property that we have right there where the casings are, just outside, I want to say we have five or six acres.
Three-ish acres, and it abuts the Halverson's.
Yeah, so nothing to, continues to this. We abut, we have a couple acres right outside in the county that abuts the Halverson's, and then there's additional gaps before the other property of Paul Pryor that we have optioned.
Okay, so your options are with Paul, it's okay?
Yeah, yeah.
So we're to give our opinion on this, right? That's what we're here for.
That's what we're here for.
Okay, so my, I would be not in favor of amending this current zoning to what the master plan is projecting in the future.
Can I clarify? Because you said two different things, current zoning than master plan in the future. We're conforming the master plan in the future, but we're trying to change the current zoning.
Exactly, so you want to change the current zoning to what the master plan says?
Yes.
I thought that's what I said, maybe I was late, maybe I misspoke.
General plan.
General plan, sorry. My personal feel, the feel we've had on all the other conversations I've, we've had on this area, and it's kind of the conversations we've had earlier tonight, I think it needs to stay the way it is and develop along the lines it's already zoned out to be. I want to be honest with that, because I don't want a lot of effort going into something that I'd be against. I'm one of six, but that's my opinion on it. I think it goes a lot with what it would take to get all the infrastructure in there. I know you're planning on that, I know this is not your first rodeo, but those are my thoughts.
Current zoning is RR?
Yeah.
That's what it says.
So my opinion, I'll share it, is I would not be in favor of moving forward on any development that's outside of our growth boundary until we know that the services are even available. I don't think it's a good idea to even move forward.
I concur with the comments. Don't really have anything different to say. Well, the only thing different to say would be, I think until we really know what's going to be going on in the river bottoms, I think it's jumping the gun to start an edge of it before we know what the plan is for the river bottoms.
Before you make a zone change.
Yeah. And that's, you know, that's just been a tough topic to address with this community.
I know the city has been in multiple meetings with different planners about the river bottoms, and we have one resident here that is kind of a victim of that discussion. He has development on the north side, and he lives on the south side. And there hasn't been a lot of appetite to go to the south side of the road with, you know, with further development. So to make that jump from the road that's past your house all the way down on the other side of the river and right to the edge of the river bottoms is kind of a tough, a tough thing for me, especially when there isn't existing facilities out there. That's just my opinion, could change, but that's how I feel right now.
Dave, would you be in favor of them coming through your property to tie in the sewer?
What's that?
Would you be in favor, would you work with them to come through your own property to tie into the sewer?
If I could work an agreement with the city to be able to build on my property, which I've had three good offers, it's been turned down by the city.
Well, that's partially why I say what I say, is that I don't feel good about you being in that kind of a situation, and we skip right over you and other property owners there that aren't being given the go-ahead, you know, and then we come over to your property and go with not only a development, but high development, or high-density development. And we haven't even decided what we're going to do with the rest of the river bottoms. It hasn't been brought up to us yet.
Yeah, I feel like, yeah, I feel like there's a lot of discussion with the river bottoms and TDRs and stuff like that, and I think they, those decisions should be made before giving, before approving something like that. Again, it's the third time I said it tonight. I just think we need to relook at the general plan, see, I mean, I just think it's probably a good time to reevaluate the whole general plan, but...
So, sorry.
No.
I think if you were to actually come to a meeting like this with the property owners between you and the sewer line and they were all in favor, that could go a long ways in possibly changing some opinions, but it's hard to, I feel like we kind of jumped in the gun.
So we've got one here tonight, so if I were to bring the other property owner, and potentially the city is that other property owner, and is there, the idea that we can get sewer there for me is very palatable.
Okay. What the city gives an easement, you could, for the whole sewer, do you have the ability?
We don't.
Well, the city...
The city, obviously, the city.
It's what the city provided, it would pay for it.
Yeah, they've got that piece of property that obviously could get you all the way to where you need to go, possibly, but that's my opinion. So then going back to what these guys have said as well, there's, we're still in the middle of the whole river bottoms vision, and I don't know what the future is with that, with TDRs.
To that end...
It's hard to tie your hands based on something that's still up in the air.
And there are more discussions happening.
I don't want you to go, yeah, I don't want you to go through a bunch of...
More money, an effort, but after something that we're going to lay them for longer.
Yeah, that's not, that's not fair to you.
I just don't, that, that's also part of my concern, is if I don't feel I can support that, I want to be upfront with that now, so you don't go put $50,000 into a side study and then we come back and say, no, don't want to do it, because that kind of happens a little wild.
Yeah.
I think that's what Dave is trying to help steer us away from, is that exact thing. And to be clear, the concern that we have is, we've got an application that we submitted not months ago, but years ago, that is still just sitting there because, because of a challenging conversation on what's going to happen. I get that it's challenging, you know, I commend many of the comments that you gentlemen put forth tonight on development and property rights and master plans, and there's so much that I agree so, so I, point of fact, my colleague here and I were discussing, we're going to record that, we're going to bring that to another meeting. There's things that you guys have indicated that we're on board with, but we do have, you know, members of your community that have made life decisions based on concepts and mindsets that existed several years ago. I mean, those casings under the river didn't exist because we planned on having agricultural forever. They were put underneath the river because we anticipated development. And a continued delay is just that, it's just another delay for somebody else to voice an opinion that, as you guys echoed, is a repeating opinion. You know, I was talking to a gentleman today, he's like, you know, trying to build a fence across my property, and the neighbors got really mad because they enjoyed looking at my trees. You know, and he says, well, why don't you plant your own trees? And we look at this and say, well, you know, this property owner earlier tonight says, you know, I'm sitting across the street and I'm looking at this monstrosity house, you know, my view's gone. But yet those people across the street looking our way are saying, we don't want to do anything because it's going to mess up our view. And so we understand kind of the give and take and the yin and yang on this. I come from, you know, we lived out of town in Cody, Wyoming, because a town of 8,000 people was a lot of people.
In Wyoming?
Yeah, I, yes. I get the idea of a rural feel and a rural community and some of the attitudes that come with that. You know, I often feel like I'm the black sheep of the family, my own worst enemy, because I go develop perfectly good farm ground. That being said, there is a master plan that exists for this property. We're trying to propose a development that consistently matches that master plan. We have the ability and the capacity to solve some of the challenges that exist on utilities. Those are just dollars that, you know, and with dollars and cents, we can figure that out. I understand the idea that, hey, let's get the master plan put together for the whole river bottoms before you get that. I also understand that I've been waiting for that for three years, and quite frankly...
Man, you're a newbie. It's been a lot longer than three years.
Understood, but two point, it's, you know, we have brown sitting out in the county that you guys are trying to plan for, while we have zoning that exists in the city that we want to access and use. And there was an agreement with the idea of some form of development taking place, and we're just trying to exercise based on that agreement. So while I respect your efforts, the fact that we're here at 1:00 in the morning tonight, I can't tell you how grateful I am for you guys sticking around, but man, it's been a late night. So in no way do I want to be disrespectful, but at the same time, we're looking to try and get something done, and we'll keep pushing, even if it turns into denial. Understand we're going to keep pushing because I have a fiduciary responsibility for the investments made, and we need answers. I have a fiduciary responsibility for, for the investments made and, and we need answers and we need to move forward.
I think that you have to keep in mind too, that, that the discussions that were made and had didn't involve any of us in this room. Maybe it did you, but it did not.
Didn't me.
So, you know, we're working off of he said, she said, but more than that, you didn't hear anybody at this table, I don't think, that was disappointed in your concept.
No, and it was...
That's not the issue. The issue is, is do, we hopscotch across the countryside to complete a development over here that may not even be consistent with what the, the river bottoms plan becomes. There's, there's a lot of pressure. Man, you're not the only one. River bottoms have a, we've got a golf course sitting there and the prime property in the whole world is golf course property, you know, and, and other places that people have gone and bought large tracts of land, you know, and you're probably, you're familiar with the fellow that's got millions of dollars that's invested in the river bottoms with the anticipation that the city would annex it and all the, all the, all of the infrastructure it'd be in. And, you know, it's obvious that the city's not ready to make that jump yet. Doesn't say, just like I said before, things will change and I suspect that they will, but I don't think that the time, at least for me, the time's not ripe now, just because of what I've said.
But I do...
If you could get all of your property owners lined up and you came en masse and said, we like this idea and here we are with all of our ground and we're ready to go, now that's a different story.
Because we've had a lot of consistency with some of the property owners there, what, when you say all of the property owners, is that all the property owners in the river bottom, all the property owners for my sewer easement, what, what do you refer to there? Because there's some legitimacy that I do that.
Well, I think that you'd have to start with where the, where your facilities are now and who you've got to cross and go through and who is interested in this development. If you've got one guy who is okay with crossing his property, but the people on either side of him don't want that development, that's going to weigh heavily in whether that's ever done or not. You know, just like our discussions with, with the neighbors earlier tonight, you know...
So for example, if I brought Mike Mendenhall and this property owner in the Howersons and we all showed up and said, hey, yeah, we all like this, that would, that'd be enough for you to kind of kick this ball forward even though no challenge has been effectively solved as far as your master plan on the river bottom?
Well, I...
I can't say that.
I think that there are members of the city council that are motivated to get the river bottoms, get the river bottoms issues settled with how, like, with possibilities of what they're going to do, that they're motivated to do that sooner rather than later.
And maybe, I feel like maybe a little bit, I think we're now starting to kind of get a little bit circular.
Yeah.
These folks will have an opportunity to have the same conversation with the city council. It's just, there's that. I'm hearing kind of a few different opinions. Some about waiting until in one form or another, just the general plan gets reviewed, whether that's just the river bottoms or bigger. That might impact the timing of somebody being comfortable seeing the property develop. I'm hearing that if the utilities were there and if there was some critical mass maybe of property owners that were ready to develop, that that could maybe change the perspective in terms of being more comfortable having development approved. I haven't heard necessarily a concern about, you know, the D-word, density and that type of a thing, which is consistent with the city's general plan. The growth boundary is brought up is one other thing. The floodplain was brought up.
I'd be curious to hear from UDOT as well.
UDOT would, I, I believe, I don't think...
You don't think they'd have any concern?
That existing access turned into a local street connection. I don't think that would be a concern for them.
That'd be a concern for me trying to pull out, pull out of there if I were going to Salem. That road's getting busier every day.
It's true.
But I don't know.
Where there's an existing access, that would be, that would, I think, weigh very heavily in favor of somebody that would just wanted to expand it. So those, those are the things that I've heard from my perspective.
I'll tell you another concern, not, not necessarily of me, you know, in a sense, yeah, but others as well. I think a lot of people are concerned about the first domino in the river bottoms. And would this be it? Meaning they allow this and then what? Now all of a sudden in everybody's minds, the entire river bottoms chucked full of homes. And so I think you guys are in a tough position because you're trying to be that first domino. And a lot of people have the mindset that if I allow this, well, then how do I deny or tell others that they can't do the same? And so you're, you're kind of in a tough position of trying to sell what you've got.
And, you know, really, the current plan suggests that there's only one domino there, right?
The current one, yeah. But in everyone's minds, they're like, it starts somewhere. And then the next neighbor looks at it and says, okay, well, they've built homes, I don't like farming anymore, I don't like the look of my property because now there's homes next to it, so I want to develop it, I want to make some money.
Yeah, you have one right here, right?
That's right.
Hattie's Acres and McHale's.
Not in the state reserve to classify farming, make it widely, heard of anything, but, I mean, it basically was bought for retirement.
Well, from my standpoint, A, I appreciate all the feedback you've taken, the efforts. I appreciate Dave providing us this opportunity. And, and to Dave's point, that I didn't hear a lot of concerns about too much density or you didn't like the look of the plat, and maybe you didn't look close enough because your other concerns were superseding and you just, I don't, I don't know.
We reviewed it last night also, our little work group we did, so it's been a lot, sometime a lot, not a lot, but sometime a lot.
I don't have concerns with that.
So yeah, you know, conceptually, you know?
Is that...
I don't know that anybody's awfully concerned about that. It's, it's just...
Yeah, this zone, for, your, your medium density is, is your master plan and we were looking for, I believe it was an R6 zone for, for this layout, which is part of your medium density.
So are they, are those detached?
Yes, that's all detached, single-family homes.
Okay.
We're adding parking along our intent here, I mean, let's talk about the plan just a little bit. Our intent was to create parking and for the trail system that the city was intending to build around the, the pond, also produce, producing some additional parking along the river. So as that trail gets built along the rivers, people have a place to park and, and not crowding the streets and things. And so we were trying to create this connection point for trails, for the amenities that, that were intended when this concept, you know, the, the idea of that pond was originally thought about. So the, you know, we're, we're trying to incorporate those original thought processes, which I think we're very good in, in creating this kind of public space. You know, we're pushing what, you know, before we had, to your point, much higher density next year. We've lessened that to be more conforming, so we're not trying to change the master plan or the general plan, I'm sorry. And, you know, but we are keeping that, those smaller units and that density next to your main highway there, so we're not clogging up other roads. And, and Howersons like this, they've seen it. All the other property owners in the region have seen this and are in favor. Assumptions, birds, I mean, the, it's, everyone knows what we're trying to do and everyone's on board.
Okay. I've not been down there, does that pond smell at all?
I don't think so.
It smells like a pond? I don't know what smell you're looking for. It, it's not, there's some concerns that we have with it that, that need to be improved, but those are all covered. Ironically, the trigger to resolve those issues is the development.
For that...
So there's some improvements that need to be done, but, but we need the development to go to trigger those things. But it smells like a pond.
There's, the flow that goes through it isn't very fast.
No.
But everything that goes into it comes out for the most part.
Yeah, it's, I think it could be very nice and, and the, I think the original vision that was painted there, we've, we've obviously bought into it, hook, line and sinker, so...
The higher, the ones along the pond, they have the smaller setbacks, right? I think Dave was telling us, don't those have smaller setbacks between the units? Or was that another property we were talking about?
Wouldn't have been this one.
Up along the pond, those?
What's the width of those and what do you guys have in mind?
Yeah, that's another project we talked about last night.
I'm sorry, it's too late at night, I don't remember.
I think it's like...
Well, they're narrow enough that they're, they're not going to have much.
Is it 50 foot?
They're less than 10 foot.
Yeah, so to put a 40 foot...
Home, you got five feet on each side.
But they're like that other, sort of really drove through up on, off Kangen Road. That's what's quite nice.
You just ruined one of my favorite pheasant hunting places when the city...
I told you, I was my own worst enemy, I get it.
Ah, for being from Wyoming, you ought to understand that.
Any other questions that we have for this? Any instruction for staff? Because I want to make sure when we walk away, Dave and I have a good, clean conversation on how we're moving forward or not moving forward.
Where'd Dave go? Dave, what, what more, what more do they need to come back to us, to have us make some kind of...
Yeah, to be candid, I've heard that you guys, you're anxious to move forward. You want a decision made on the zoning. In order to do that, at least with staff's recommendation, they'd have to have a full-blown preliminary plat application prepared. They would have to identify exactly how utilities would be delivered to the property with that application. That's going to cost some money. I am hearing from a couple of commissioners that they're not ready to support the zone change. So I think you guys understand, at least from what I'm hearing tonight, that that's, that's appropriate for you guys, you know, to not commit a vote, so to speak, but, but that wouldn't be a slam dunk, is how I'd put it.
I have, I have a concern about the property that's along the highway that goes back to the river. We've got development up to the river on the highway now that has been approved, but nothing south of the river along the highway. And so your plan right now, unless it's deep enough to take that, to take that sewer back to your sewer line, that would hinder the development of that property. So in my mind, I would like to see some kind of plan that incorporates the property along the highway as well as some of that that's, let's call it inland of the, of the, of the highway. You know, and then we're also talking about, I'm not, you know, I don't have a great, I, I'm not crazy about the idea of having one small piece of ground that, that borders the river now, you know, make the decision on what goes on on either side. And so I think that it takes some kind of a consensus by the city, the staff, and the, and the city council as to what are you going to do with the development south of the road that Dave lives on? If you're going to allow Dave, you know, if, if this depends on Dave, Dave is only interested if he can have, if he can develop.
Which is, literally, I would say that's the current general plan.
Okay, so if that's the general plan to develop Dave's to the highway, and so he's got city property on the east and the highway on the west, we're good with that? Did that become, that...
Planting property south of South Lane is no...
Of South Lane.
South of South Lane is no development.
Well, that's my point.
Right.
So until that changes, we don't even have a starting point. Where, where do we take the, where do we take the sewer line unless, you know? So until that's resolved, I don't, I don't know what, where our discussion can start. Or am I just, am I, am I up in the, at 1:00 in the morning just having a nightmare?
That's pretty much what it is.
Yeah.
So you...
Go ahead. You can't hurt my feelings.
I take what John's saying.
Tell the general plan to change.
Yes.
Then it's premature, is what I'm hearing you say.
It's not ripe.
You're, you're going to have a difficult time getting a group of commissioners and council members saying it's all right to develop south of Field Lane, south of South Lane.
At this time.
So talk about your property, which going along with what John says, then what incentive do you get of using your land to tie into sewer if you can then not develop your land?
Until that's resolved through the standard process, which, which is going to involve staff and, and of course somewhere along the line, us as well, but the city council will make that decision. And I haven't seen any appetite to have any development south of, south Field Lane. So I can't change that.
And that's what we're looking for tonight, is your thoughts. I mean, that's literally, it's that, it's that straightforward. These folks are capable, they've done projects before.
Yep.
Likewise, they're big guys, you know, they, they understand the realities of developing and all of the, the factors that come from purchasing property and getting projects entitled and that type of thing. So I, I think it's important that if you guys want, have a similar conversation with the city council, take their temperature. They always have...
Which I think we'd appreciate.
Right?
Yeah.
I think I'm kind of teed up for that. And, and I appreciate it was said several times tonight, right? They have a right to ask. They have made application. I think one of the first comments that we provided on their application though is that for residential projects, we don't recommend that the zoning be changed until we have some pretty significant engineering work done. And that's where I wanted to divert it to a different process. You've heard it three times now tonight, and that's why we are where we are now.
And I want, and I want you to understand that it isn't a problem with the development. It's not a problem with the, with the concept. It's a problem with, I, from my perspective over the last couple of years, is that there is, that there has not been an appetite to go south of, of South Lane or what, what is it called, South Field Lane?
South Lane that goes...
South Lane.
7650, other than about 1,300 south now city, whatever they go with that.
But my other comment earlier tonight is, is that there is none of this set in stone and in, and, you know, if you go through the proper process and meet the, meet the desires and the concerns of the city and the residents, it can change.
Brandon, will you air, put your cursor over South Lane, south of, I mean, where are we?
Over Dave's house.
South of South Lane.
Yeah.
Oh, gotcha.
Hey, I like your house. You do a good job.
Okay.
He is right, though. Respectably looking out your front window compared to them looking out their front window.
So what they're saying is, okay, so now scroll down. So what they're saying is they're not, they haven't been interested, or there's not appetite to develop south of South Lane, which, would that assume that the yellow part that is south, where your, where your area is, is that, are people, people wanting to turn that into green? That's the question is, when you reevaluate the general plan, does it make more sense to have that be part of the river bottoms or does it make sense to develop yellow there? Anyway.
Spot on.
So I think that that's, and, and it wasn't me that came up with that, it was other conversations I'm hearing. But I'm, if that's what you're saying, is that what needs to happen in general plan? And that's the reason I asked you if you're, if you, how would you feel about TDRs?
Now you know.
Thank you.
I'm scared to death.
Okay, well, I think we've got what we need, Dave, so thank you for your evening. I wasn't planning on spending my night with you.
Too bad we don't have an all-night coffee shop in Spanish Fork, huh? You could treat us all.
They open in like two hours.
I make a motion we adjourn.
Oh, second thought.
What happened to Jax? What happened to Jax?